Members of Boards of Education hold a unique public trust. They are elected officials, however, they serve without pay and devote hundreds of hours to their duties. This community depends on its school board to provide for the education of the community's children, to see that the property and finances of a district are properly managed, and to ensure that the many laws governing education are followed. Changes in education law and financing continue to make this a challenging time to serve on a Board of Education. So to our candidates, I too thank you for your desire to serve your community as a Board of Education trustee. After opening statements, where each candidate will have three minutes to speak, I will begin with questions. Questions will be directed to the candidates in rotating order, so that each person will have the opportunity to answer first. But all candidates will answer each question. Answers will not exceed two minutes, and the timekeepers will be facilitating through the PTSA. A yellow card means that there are 30 seconds remaining, and a red card means that time's up, but we will allow you to finish a sentence. As moderator, I have the discretion to combine similar questions, reword questions, rule out inappropriate or repetition questions before I ask them, and my decision for that will be final. Because we have six candidates and a large audience, I will try to get to as many questions as possible before the timeframe is up. I'm not expecting that we'll get to all of them, but I will try to prioritize them such that you get a good sense of what you would be expecting from a Board of Education member in these candidates. At the end of questions, each candidate will be able to make a closing statement of no more than two minutes. And I want to introduce the candidates as they appear on the ballot. Mr. Ted Resti, Ms. Renee Sanchez-Kazakas, Gary Graziano, Jerome Jean-Gilles, Kim McCloskey, and Jory Sincota. And the panel of candidates have allowed me to ask them questions by their first name, for which I'm grateful. So we'll begin with opening statements, and Ted, you get to go first.
Good evening. I've lived on Leeward Lane in Pittsburgh for the past 18 years with my wife, Chris, and my three daughters, twins Abby and Carly, who are seniors at Sutherland, and Natalie, an eighth grader at Cockings. They were my inspiration to run three years ago for the Board, a desire to give back to the district that has done so much for my family. I currently work as Executive Director for the Brighton Fire District, where I have also served as a volunteer firefighter for 32 years, rising to the rank of Chief. Additionally, I co-own JetX Delivery Service. I have served on numerous boards, including the Pittsburgh Youth Service Board, where I was treasurer and gained exposure to the social and emotional needs in our schools through this experience. I can honestly say that the past three years, it has been both an honor and a pleasure to serve as a member of this Board of Education. I won't say that it has been easy, but that it is not what I signed up for. I committed to work hard for our children, scrutinize the budget, and make responsible decisions, and I believe that is what I've done. While serving on the Board, I've enjoyed attending the many meetings, participating in retreats and workshops, and my favorite, attending building tours to meet with our staff to see firsthand what is going on in our schools and support facilities. On a broader scale, I've enjoyed chairing the district's Audit Committee and participating in the Monroe County School Board's Information Exchange Committee. I believe that this Board is completely student-centered, weighing all decisions against the measure of what is best for the students. When I ran for this Board three years ago, I stated that I thought what made this district a cut above the rest was a secret sauce, if you will, called collaboration. I have experienced this over the past three years and can confirm this to be true. I am amazed to the extent to which collaboration exists at all levels. Watching new initiatives get created and rolled out, I have seen this process in action and the extensive involvement at all levels. Though often taking longer than I would normally like, it makes sense to have everyone involved as far greater results are achieved. My one and only commitment as an incumbent is to continue to foster the involvement of the community at large in an improved two-way communication with them. The district has made great efforts in this area, however, there is more work to be done. I could not possibly conclude without completing our incredible -- I'm sorry. I could not possibly conclude without complimenting our incredibly talented administrators, teachers, and support staff. I've had the pleasure of meeting so many of them over the past three years. I appreciate how they give themselves so passionately every day. You will not find a better group anywhere. I am ready, willing, and able to serve another term and would appreciate any and all support. So please come out and vote May 16th for the budget, for full-day K, for Ted, and most importantly, the kids of the Pittsburgh Central School District. Thank you.
Thank you. And Renee?
Good evening. It's nice to see you all here tonight. Thank you for taking the time to come here and to listen to all of us as candidates for the Board of Education. My name is Renee Kazakas, and I'm here to let you guys know a few things about myself. First of all, I'm actually not originally from Rochester. I'm originally from Orchard Park, New York, and I've been here since 1999 when I took my first teaching position as a social studies teacher at Roth Middle School. This year, I'm finishing my 18th year of teaching. I have my BA and MA, both in education, from SUNY Fredonia. I am currently married with two kids, Campbell and James, who are in the fourth and third grades at Thornell Road Elementary, and we've been living here in Pittsburgh since about 2010. And as a family, over the years, we've become more involved with community activities. We are involved with Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, as well as various community sports, and I'm proud, excited, and extraordinarily nervous that I will be coaching my daughter's third and fourth grade soccer team this spring for Pittsburgh Mustangs. I'm looking forward to it, but this is a lot easier than coaching, I think. One thing I want you guys to all know about me is that I love teaching. It is my passion, it is my career, it is what I do best. I've had many roles than just being a classroom teacher. I have run Student Council, National Junior Honor Society. I've been a collegial coach to new teachers that have come on board. I have mentored student teachers from our local colleges, and I've worked on developing curriculum for our school district. And over the years of teaching, I've even been blessed to co-teach with special education teachers. And all of these experiences, plus many others combined, have really provided me with the ability to be able to teach and reach a diverse population of students. And it's from this love of teaching and from my passion that I have for it, I would like to do more for our community, and I've been inspired by my students to do more for all of you, as I do more for them. And I look forward to utilizing my educational experiences by bringing my unique perspective as both a parent and as a teacher to the Board of Ed. It is evident to me that this district prides itself on rigorous standards and maintaining academic excellence. In order to maintain these standards, it is imperative that our district be both competitive and comprehensive in our educational offerings to all of our students. We need to maintain our high standards and continue to offer relevant classes that prepare even our youngest of learners. And these goals cannot be achieved by the Board of Ed alone. It takes more than just us to make this work. And if elected, it is my plan with all of the stakeholders involved to listen to ideas, to continue to work towards the best solutions for our community. And we will accomplish this for all students, not just for the students who are currently enrolled, but for future students who will one day benefit from our collaborative and our thoughtful decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary?
My name's Gary, and I'm a recovering architect. I have a Bachelor of Architecture from Cornell and a Master's in Engineering Management from Drexel. So what this means, if you've heard about the dynamic that exists between architects and engineers, is that I spend a lot of time arguing with myself. Anyway, Pittsburgh has been my home base since the late 70s when my parents moved here to the house in which they still live. My wife, Nan, and I had our first home in the village and moved back here in 2014 to buy a preschool in Bushnell's Basin and make Pittsburgh our permanent home. We have two grown children, Dan, a Pittsburgh native who attended RIT and lives in Pennsylvania, and Liza, who has two degrees from Cornell and is living and working in the UK. Both attended Pittsburgh schools, as well as schools in other states. I've been a little bit of a nomad. My background encompasses more than 35 years of diverse and deep business, community service, and Board leadership experience. For example, I've served as an executive with McGraw-Hill and in the Facilities Group in the Rochester City School District. I've also written more than two dozen articles on strategy, planning, and innovation. And I have experience running local, regional, and national association boards, turning around a troubled nonprofit and growing it to serve 2,500 people with disabilities in 33 counties across Pennsylvania, and overseeing the building and operation of a large public library in a town of 40,000 people, about the size of Pittsburgh. To learn more about me, you can visit www.gcg-pcsd-boe.info. Okay? Now, that's enough about me. It's time now to share what I'd like to do for you. My mission in running for the Board is to ensure that Pittsburgh schools remain the best in the area and among the best in the state and the nation. That is my primary goal. And that, future budgets are responsible, sustainably funded, and affordable for all taxpayers, because it takes two taxpaying households without a student to support everyone with a student. Next, I'm going to share why I'm running. First, I'm troubled by the budget process, the way the Board conducts itself, and the unsatisfactory outcomes they've delivered regarding last year's budget, this year's budget, the extended school date proposal, and the full-day kindergarten rollout. I'm also deeply concerned about a budget projection showing increases of about 4% a year for the next 10 years, and that's before adding on the cost of full-day kindergarten and some newly acquired long-term liabilities. Hence, my candidacy, because where I see an opportunity that I can apply planning, management, process improvement, and creative problem solving to make a difference, I get involved. Here's my bottom line. Unless we want to see regular tax increases of 4% or more, our Board needs members such as me. We have the determination and skill sets to maintain our great schools and also manage our finances, because failing to plan and line-item budget scrubbing are not strategies for success. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerome?
I want to first thank everybody in the audience and everyone here for attending this meeting and allowing all of us to introduce ourselves to you. I am Jerome Jean-Gilles. I've been in Pittsburgh probably for the shortest tenure of anybody here. I moved into this community roughly almost four years ago. I didn't know what to expect. I was attracted to this community mainly because of the outstanding school district that was here. And I'm a father of two young children, age six and four. My oldest, I should say, has just recently got plugged into the Pittsburgh School District. And I would say my familiarity with education is that I've probably been in the education system for the longest, but in the other aspect, I've been a student for the majority of my life. And up until recently, I've had the opportunity, because I've become an academic assistant professor at University of Rochester. I am a clinician, but I also teach medical students, graduate students, and resident doctors. It's allowed me to now also see the full gamut as a student and also now as a teacher. And granted, as a teacher, I see the success, the success of a good education system. These are students who have gone through the full gamut of good school system, whether it be in middle school, high school, and graduate school. And this is what I want for all of our children in this district, to be able to continue to reach their upper limit and excel to their highest potential. So as far as what I can bring to this Board, you know, I don't have a political background or any -- I was really inspired by the current climate of this country, where it seems to be an attack on the public school system, and I definitely want to preserve our school system. Again, this is one of the things that is the strongest aspect of our town. Now, I should also say that, you know, granted, the school system is one of the main features that brought me here, but I fell in love with this town. You know, I wasn't sure I was even going to stay in this town for a long time, but I moved into a very diverse community. I was really surprised at the diversity in this town. I loved the area, the opportunities, all the different opportunities you have here. And meeting people and engaging with the community has really has made me feel like this is -- I'm very fortunate to be in this town. And I want to, you know, I do bring a different perspective as a physician, where my mind works in a different process. I really focus on evidence-based and data to drive my decision-making. I think I can bring that different type of critical analysis on the Board and help. As some of our colleagues want us to have a fiscally responsible budget, but also want to maintain an excellent school system, which is imperative for all of us that live as residents in Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And Kim?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kim McCloskey, and I'm currently serving in my 21st year on the Board of Education. I've lived in Pittsburgh for about 30 years. I have two sons who graduated from Sutherland High School. I've served in the Board Leadership six times as President and six times as Vice President. And prior to my Board service, I served two years as President of the PTSA. Over the years, I've served on many district committees, and I've held other various leadership positions at both the county and the state levels, including I'm President of the Monroe County School Board Association, and I was a representative to the New York State Regents' Advisory Committee. I've also presented at several state and national conferences. And all of this has given me, I think, a comprehensive view of today's educational issues. Outside of the school district, I've served 12 years as a member of the Galisona Children's Hospital Board, and I've also served 14 years on the Nazareth College Board of Trustees. This work helps to broaden my perspective and to keep me in tune with the greater Rochester community. I have a strong financial background. I have a BS in accounting and 10 years of work experience in public accounting and administration at Strong Memorial Hospital. I've also worked as a leadership coach and a consultant for local and state school boards. Without a doubt, I think this is one of the most challenging times public education has ever experienced. It requires creativity and a collaborative approach in order to reach solutions that maintain the excellent, well-rounded education we currently provide to our students. In recent years, there have been numerous negative issues that impact public education. I, along with many others, have consistently advocated for our district by communicating to our legislators, the Commissioner of Education, and the Governor. I believe that working together among all of our stakeholder groups is one of the most important things that this district has and definitely one of the strengths of our district. Along with it being a challenging time in education, though, it's also a very exciting time. The world and education here have and will continue to dramatically change at a very rapid pace. Today's students have much different needs, and they need an ever-changing skill set. They need to learn to manage and interpret vast amounts of information. They must possess critical thinking skills, along with problem-solving and decision-making skills. They need to have the ability to accept change and to value diversity. They need to be team players and lifelong learners. They need rigorous, authentic, real-world experiences. We must also foster the development of qualities such as respect for others, responsibility, and integrity. Our students' success depends on the quality of education that they receive today in our schools. I'm seeking reelection because I'm committed to the quality of education in Pittsburgh and our area and to the success of all of our children. Thanks.
And Jory?
Hi. My name's Jory Sincota, and my husband Eric and I have lived in Pittsburgh for 13 years. We have four children in the school district. Our oldest daughter, Ann Olivia, will be a ninth grader at Mendon High School next fall. We have twins as well, who will be eighth graders at Barker Road Middle School, and we have a fourth son named Reeve, who will be a fourth grader at Park Road Elementary. I graduated from Marist College with a degree in Public Relations Communications, and I have worked in the higher education field for over 20 years. West Coast, UC San Diego. Here in New York State, I've worked for Marist, Kewka College, Hobart William Smith, and currently, I am a graduate enrollment representative at Nazareth College. I've also run a successful college consulting business for the last two years. I stayed at home when my children were small, and during that time, I served as the Financial Secretary for my church's council and as the Treasurer at Christ Clearing Community Preschool, where all my children attended. I became the Building PTSA Chair at Park Road Elementary in 2011, where I served as a parent representative on the Instructional Leadership Council and began attending district PTSA meetings. At the end of my term, I was asked if I was willing to serve as the district PTSA co-president, and I accepted. My first year, our superintendent formed a district advocacy team to address rising issues with new standards implementation, changes to the teacher evaluation process, pressing issues from the tax cap, and limited unpredictable state funding. It was a crash course for me on issues surrounding public education and the need for advocacy, and not at all what I envisioned as my leadership stint in PTSA would be about. While this work did consume much of my time during my two years as co-president, I was able to revamp PTSA's communication outreach to parents through e-news and social media, which I still oversee, forge stronger relationships between building PTSA's and streamline many of our program processes. I also attempted to educate both our parents and the school district on the role of PTSA as a standalone child advocacy group. I learned a lot. I made a few missteps, and I probably learned more from that than anything else. I've certainly ruffled a few feathers along the way, but I've also formed amazing relationships with parents, teachers, and administrators, who are all critical to our success, and when we work together, we do great things. I believe the key to effective collaboration is good communication, encouraging others to take risks in their thinking, and truly listening to others without defensiveness. We've been dealing with challenges on multiple fronts for the past few years: new standards and curriculum, financial limitations with growing costs, and a sense of attack on our teachers and public education as a whole. I think it's left many of us feeling unsure and vulnerable. The need for our community to work together to address these issues is more critical than ever. I'm not afraid to ask tough questions and make sure that we share those answers with all of you. My hope is that I bring my relationship and communication skills, coupled with the knowledge I've gained the past six years, to help foster respectful, productive dialogue, and effective, transparent feedback loops to our processes. I am so happy to see all of you here tonight willing to engage with us, because your participation matters, most importantly, to our children.
Thank you to all of you. Before we begin, I've had a couple people bring questions to me. If you have a question, hold it up on one of your cards, and we'll get the PTSA folks. And anytime during the questioning, if you've developed a question, just hold it up, and someone will look around and get that for you. People in the front are willing to bring them up. I'm guessing the people in the back aren't so willing to run up here, but we want to get to all your questions. Okay, so again, we're going to start with the first question with the ballot order, so Ted, you'll get the first question. And this is about your role on the Board of Education. And if you are an incumbent, it's one part, and if you're not an incumbent, it's another part. So if you presently sit on the Board, what specific dimensions have you brought to the Board that are unique? If you are seeking election to the Board for the first time, what dimensions do you add that might enhance the current Board?
As somebody that sits on the Board, I feel that the most unique thing that I bring is my accounting background and business background acumen. Having served in public accounting and in private accounting for a number of years, it's a different angle coming from private industry. I look at the numbers differently than most people do, and I spend a lot of time analyzing those and looking at those, and something that I enjoy doing, which is not something that most people do. And so that's my uniqueness and angle.
Thank you. Renee?
Thank you. Being a first-time member of the community running for the Board of Elections, I do feel like there's a few dimensions that I'll be able to add. Aside from the fact that I'm a parent and an educator, I believe that my honesty, my forthright communication with parents and with teachers, students, the community as a whole bode well for me, as well as for you. My willingness to stand up for children and to do what is right. I'm not afraid to stand alone, and I am more than willing to speak up when necessary. And I do believe that I am very approachable. I'm not one of those people who is standoffish and doesn't want to hear what you have to say. I'm one of those people who I want to. Don't be surprised if I engage you in Wegmans, and I'll see how things are going, and if there's anything that I can do to help. I want to hear what people have to say, and I want to hear how we can do things better for all of you.
Thank you. Gary?
Well, there are a number of skill sets I can bring, some of which I am sure are resident on the Board already, perhaps not always a parent. First of all, would be my listening skills that I gained through years and years of marketing research, my analytic skills, I'm pretty high on that scale, my strategic thinking and planning skills. We've got some big long-term challenges that we have to deal with, and we have to tack them now. My financial skills as opposed to accounting skills. I, like Ted, have spent a lot of years in business, and I look at things perhaps differently than an accountant would or than an educator would. My skills and bent towards innovation, creative problem solving, and creative problem solving facilitation, I think, could be very helpful, in moving the district along to new solutions faster and probably with less expense. Sort of lastly, I'd bring tenacity to the job. I would have high energy, and I would take great pride in serving you.
Thank you. Jerome?
All right. Well, before I get into what I can bring to the Board as a member, I want to take an opportunity to thank the current Board members, including two incumbents running for reelection, for doing tremendous job in navigating some of the several financial hurdles to create a budget that finally can bring full-day kindergarten to Pittsburgh while maintaining the same high quality of education we all expect from our school district. So as a physician and a product of the New York City Public School System, I fully understand the power of education and the opportunities that it brings to those that are fully engaged in the learning process. On a daily basis, as a physician, I make life-altering decisions by relying on evidence-based medicine and research. So as a Board member, I would be using a similar decision-making approach to support policies that would be in the best interest of our students mentally, physically, and socially, while at the same time placing our students in the best position possible to succeed for the future. As a clinical teacher, as I mentioned earlier, of medical students and graduate students and resident doctors, I see the end product of a good education. As a Board member, I will only support policies that ensure we have the best quality teachers and maintain this academic rigor that the district is known for. I will strive to make sure that all of our children, from our special needs childrens to gifted students, excel to their fullest potential. So I hope I can have your support on May 16th.
Thank you. Kim?
As a current Board member, I think I agree with Ted and also what Gary said, that my accounting background and my finance background certainly help when it comes to budget matters. I chaired the Audit Committee, and obviously, budget and funding is a huge part of the school district and the Board right now with the budget. I think I'm a good listener, and I truly believe that one of the reasons our district does so well is the collaboration between all of our stakeholder groups. I put students first. I think our whole Board actually puts students first when it comes to making decisions. And the same thing, that's all students, students with all different kinds of, all different kinds of needs. I also feel that I am a good advocate. I've done a lot of advocacy work, and with today's state aid and funding for schools, I feel like that's just going to get more and more difficult. And we really go to see our legislators, we make trips to Albany, and I think I've developed some relationships with our legislators. And also, I think it's unique what we do. When we go to see legislators, lots of times, we go in a group of Monroe County School Boards, but lots of times, we'll take like our Teachers Union President, our PTSA President, leadership in our Board, and we go as a group and show them how we do work collaboratively to make things better for all our students. And so I think those are things that I currently bring to the Board and certainly would like to continue doing.
Thank you. And Jory?
I bring a few things. Personally, I'm a parent of children at all building levels here in the district, and specifically on the Mendon side, which is a little less represented on our current Board of Education, so I think that will provide some balance on our perspective. I do have a communications background, and most importantly, in my PTSA work, that's really been the main focus of what I try to do, is outreach to families in ways that work for them. I was the person who started the Pittsburgh PTSA Facebook page and our Twitter account. I revamped our e-news so that it would be something that would be more effective for parents and give them information that they found valuable. That current Parent Community Survey you just got all in the email this week, I'm the head of the committee that created that survey and felt that its importance was critical to PTSA moving forward to serve our families. I work in the higher education field, which oftentimes, for those of you who do work on college campuses, sometimes can be a little bit of a step ahead on risk-taking and creative thinking, and we get lots of professional opportunities at Nazareth in particular. And on one area that I know has become really a focal point in our community is diversity and inclusion. Nazareth just approved a VP of Diversity and Inclusion and has a thriving community discussing those topics. They offer daily opportunities for staff members to learn about those things. And I also sit on, in regards to, I sit on the Monroe County Educational Coalition Board, which is a combination of all of the major stakeholders of public education in Monroe County. So there's Sherry, the Monroe County Board Association actually hosts that group, but there are teachers' representatives, school business officials, administrators, superintendents, and I'm the only parent representative on that Board. We work to talk about issues in education that affect all of our constituents, and then we actually lobby to legislators to advocate in effective ways to get things done. And so I believe I'm the only person, only parent in our whole region who actually serves on that Board.
Thank you. Second question, and Renee, you get this question first. And if elected, what would be your priorities for the Pittsburgh School District for the next school year?
There are a few priorities that I have.
There are a few priorities that I have. The first one would be, in fact, full-day kindergarten. I'm a full believer behind it. This can only benefit our youngest learners to improve on their fine motor skills, their social skills and academic abilities. Their curriculum would be based on learning through play, which has proven to be effective and important for cognitive growth. And it's important not to only get this started now for the current group, but for, again, for our future members of this community. I think it would make us a very competitive district with other districts in our area who are currently offering full-day kindergarten. We are one of the few who do not. It would definitely be beneficial for our district to offer it to keep us in that competitive state. I also feel that transparency is equally as important. I do believe that the community needs to know the process and the rationale behind decisions that are made by each of the board members. And in my experiences as an educator, I find that the most honest and clearst form of communication is the key to build trust as well as mutual support.
Okay. Thank you. Gary?
Thank you. Well, I think, you know, you have to focus, and you can only do a few things. And if you're lucky, you can do a few of those well. So there are three things that I think would form a focus of my first year. First, it would be to make sure that full-day kindergarten is a success. I'm going to assume that the budget will pass and that it's being measured so that we can understand, you know, that we are getting, in fact, the improvement that we expected from that investment. I'm certainly a supporter of learning through play. That's what our preschool is all about. But we have to know that we're doing the right thing for our children so that they are going to be where they need to be in the lower elementary grades. The next thing that I would do is to get smart about what the district's three, five, and 10-year plans are, both in terms of program and educational objectives and in terms of finances. And I would focus on those from the beginning and bring to the next budget process a look at the future that we could expose to the public so that as they're looking at budgets on an annual basis, they've got an idea of what's coming ahead, and they can understand better whether they should be for or against something. Then thirdly, I would want to ramp up the district's political contacts, both locally with the village and the township, and at the state to get both parties working with us and behind us to help knock loose some of the $70 million of state aid that's owed the district that could go a long way to solving some of our longer-term financial problems. But, you know, we're never going to get it if we don't get after it and keep after it because, you know, we'll call it lobbying, takes time. I've done that in past lives, and it's not always fast, but if you're relentless, you do get a return.
Thank you. Jerome?
There are three topics that definitely will be important to me during my term as a member. One would be communication. As a member, I would strive to support a consistent effort by the board to maintain transparency of what entails the school budget, even in times when there is not a tax cap override necessary. We need to educate the community on what the challenges our district face in striking a balance to provide a high-quality public school education while balancing the budget. Additionally, I would be championing to create an advocacy group, which would be a combination of residents and board members that can help engage our community to put pressure on Albany to give our district the funds that the state legally are required to provide. My second topic would be school start times. I believe the impact of school start times and sleep deprivation needs to be reevaluated. Sleep deprivation, particularly in my medical field, has been, played a major role in medical errors and led to recent reforms in medical doctrine that has benefited physician and patient care. I think we need to put our students in the best position physically, mentally, and socially to succeed. So I think we need to look at that again. And my final topic would be diversity. Pittsburgh is a diverse multicultural community, and I would welcome the opportunity to work with the PTSA and the PTTA to explore all options to have our teaching staff reflect our community.
Thank you. Kim?
I agree with some of the things people have said. I think in my opening statement, I talked about funding, and we do advocate groups of us and individually and with Monroe County School Boards. We do advocate for funding with our legislators, our senators, our representatives. But there's always more that can be done with that. And I think with the current funding, we just can't let up on that. We have to consistently keep pushing that advocacy effort. And we do involve parents and teachers, and I think that's important for the community to see that we collaborate, all of us, for the funding that we deserve and that we need. Communication is also something that's always been very big for me. As I said, I was president of the PTSA for a few years and did a lot with communication. I think, and I totally believe in transparency. I think now it's even more difficult because with social media, we try to put things on social media, and I think there's probably a balance between what's on social media and what goes out in hard copy and what goes out on email. And it's hard to reach everybody. We have an emergency system that we use for like when schools close or, you know, we had the storm, those type of things. But, and that would be a great way to communicate important things, but we can't use that. It's really, the company we bought that from told us it's not really effective if you're constantly sending communication messages out on that because people, after a while, kind of just stop looking at it. So I think, I have been for a while thinking we should start a communications committee in our district. And I think that's something that, since social media has just gotten bigger and bigger, that's something we should even look at more. I also think that social and emotional health is very important. When I look at a lot of the issues that we have in the district, and I think so many students, there's so many pressures on students now and bullying and suicide, all those things that are in the media every day, I feel like that we do do a lot. We have a lot of programs in our schools that do talk about social and emotional issues that the children have and give them support. But I really feel that's something, as time has gone along, that we really need to put more effort and more funding. So that's another thing. Collaboration, I always believe in that. And again, we meet regularly, our board representatives from board with the town of Pittsburgh and the village of Pittsburgh. And we have a lot of efficiencies and help each other in different ways and save money through that. However, there's always, of course, more things we could do with that. Also, we have tried the board to, this year and last year, to do some collaboration with the YMCA and with Nazareth College, actually, looking at our pool situation. And I just feel like we all, and the town, actually, and we did collaborate with the town on mature fields. So I just feel that in this community, we're all one, and there are only so many resources to go around and so much funding. And I feel like we should all be able to work together and come up with efficiencies that help each other and help our kids and help our community.
Thank you. Joy?
So I have a lot of the same issues. We've obviously all done our homework a little bit on one of the things that our community is concerned about. So, you know, three of my main ones, of course, would be proactive communication and transparency as well. I'd like to foster strong relationships through proactive communication that informs and educates our school community. This is critical in creating the trust and support needed when we face challenges or make necessary changes to our curriculum, schools, or policies. Diversity would be one of my highlights as well. Pittsburgh has begun a great dialogue this year on issues of diversity and inclusion. And I'd like to continue to find ways that promote these ideals in a way that brings all members of our communities together and welcomes people that will continue to broaden our perspective in meaningful ways. And then advocacy, which is probably the main thrust of a lot of the work that I did as a PTSA president, my work on the MCEC Board, as well as the GVPTA Advocacy Chair, the Genesee Valley Parent Teacher Association. And I'd like to work with our community specifically to advocate with state levers on issues that affect our schools. Most particularly, five-year funding for full-day kindergarten. If we do approve that in our district, there is actually legislation out there right now that potentially provide Pittsburgh with more funding to support that program. And there still is an opportunity to get that passed through June. Adjustments to the tax cap formula, that's one of the focuses hopefully that MCEC will be focusing on this year. And recognizing that the tax cap is here to stay, I think our community should be lobbying for ways to make the burden on school districts a little bit more fair because there is a bit of an unfair playing field between municipalities and how their tax cap works and how the school district's tax cap works. I'd like to advocate for New York State to comply with foundation aid law and how money should be dispersed to school districts as laid out in the Campaign for Fiscal Equity lawsuit of 2006, as opposed to eliminating it entirely, which was proposed this past budget cycle. I'd like to see continued evaluation and adjustment to the Common Core standards, specifically at the primary level, so that they are more devoutly appropriate. And I'm not sure if you're all aware, but revisions to those standards came out yesterday. There will be a public forum on May 30 at Rush Henrietta High School, as well as an opportunity for you to give online feedback through June 2. PTSA posted a post on that today. The moratorium on the APR legislation. An APPR is the Teacher Evaluation System. There's currently a moratorium that separates teacher evaluation from the testing process. That's slated to expire, and we need to work to make sure the disconnected tests and teacher evaluations are permanent. As stated by PCSD's advocacy team, the state should create a baseline of requirements for teacher assessments with local control on how those requirements are met. Continued advocacy for evaluation adjustments to our state assessment practices, recognizing that the state will never disconnect assessments from evaluation of schools and student performances. Testing must be balanced against standards, curriculum, performance expectations, yet must also provide timely feedback that serves to improve instruction and perceived to improve learning rather than merely grade students and their teachers. And finally, a continued pushback on the charter school-school voucher movement, which has gained more traction at the state and national level but will create an even greater funding issues for traditional public schools.
Thank you. Ted?
The advantage to going last is you get a lot of time to think. The disadvantage is everybody says everything. So my priorities would be, first, communication. And I agree, as it's been said, communication is paramount. We've certainly gotten a lot of feedback. The one thing I would add with communication is the importance that that communication be two-way. Not just the district getting things out to the community, but hearing back from the community and the responsiveness. So that communication definitely needs to be two-way, and it has to be a continual process and continual refining of that process. The next area that I would focus on is social-emotional health. That clearly is something that is incredibly important. It's something that unfortunately I see in my line of work at the fire department firsthand, responding to incidents that happen out in the community. But knowing in the school district, from my experience also with the Pittsburgh Services Board, those situations are real and ongoing in our district, and it's something that we have to keep at the forefront, and we need to continue to deal with real time. So that's something that we need to put resources toward on a continual basis. And the final thing, which has also been mentioned, the word sustainability. That's something that we have to continue to look at with budgeting and with fiscal responsibility going forward. Everything that we do today will impact tomorrow. All of our planning has to be not only worrying about today, next year, but the years down the road. We have to be responsible. I feel that we have been, I know that we will continue to be. As we looked at our budgeting process for this year, we were very responsible in not using excessive reserves going forward because that would only exacerbate problems. And sustainability is something that is probably one of the most important things that we have to consider because if we're going to maintain the high standards in Pittsburgh, we have to do so on a sustainable basis. It's something I really believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. So the third question goes to Gary first, and it's, do you support the school district budget this year? If so, why? And if not, what would you have changed?
Okay, so to review, do I support the school district budget?
This year? Why? If you do, and if you don't?
And if I don't, what would I change? Can I answer it a little differently?
Sure.
I don't support the budget, but I'm going to vote for it because I think that the way the process is configured, the alternatives that we're left with are even less attractive than the budget. I think that the way the budget was arrived at was a function of poor planning in last year's budget and probably prior year's budget, budgets when the board borrowed from reserves to fund day-to-day operating expenses, which is a real no-no. Basically, kicked the can down the road with regard to dealing with either cuts or tax increases that exceed the tax cap. And then it's, you know, it's collided with the launch of, finally, a right-priced full-day kindergarten program. So, you know, I believe that it's time to do full-day kindergarten. The district's been toying with that for more than a dozen years, and at some point, you have to make a decision to go or no go. So I will support that. If I were to do things differently, I would have started years ago with board service and more forward-looking, long-term planning and staging of expenses and making perhaps some difficult decisions about how we might do things differently so that we manage to the tax caps, which, you know, have probably been put in place for a reason, and as Joy said, are something we're going to have to live with until 2020, when maybe they'll be renewed or not. So that's kind of where I am. I will vote for it. I do not support the processes that led to it. I do not like some of the numbers in it, but I don't like the alternative. I don't want to see another one like it ever again, either.
Thank you. Jerome?
Well, after reviewing all the release of Budget Workshop documents, I do fully support the current proposed school budget and full-day kindergarten. However, as a board member, I am going to be dedicated to making sure we remain fiscally responsible without compromising the high quality of education we expect from our school district. So in total, I do support the budget.
Thank you. Kim?
I do support the budget. I feel that the budget that we propose this year is fiscally responsible. I feel that we have looked at full-day kindergarten for several years, and we, our youngest learners deserve that, and they need it, and we have the data to prove it. So I think including full-day kindergarten was a really good thing to do this year. I also think it kept our current program strong and all the activities that we have and the extracurricular things and the programs we have that add to a student's experience in school and strengthen it and just give them an all-around good education. We preserved all those. Actually, the budget is a year-round process, and it starts in the schools. And every single school principal looks at every line in their school, and then it comes to the district where the district administrators and the board look at it. And we, the district planning team, looks at the budget year-round and looks at, you know, things that may have to be cut or things that we're going to add and try to balance that. So then, in the early fall, the board starts getting more involved, and we get the information, and we hold work sessions, and they're usually an hour before a regular board meeting, where we get the opportunity to ask questions, look at the budget in more detail, and ask, you know, tough questions of what can be added? Why are we doing something this way? Look at the funding, which is incredibly difficult right now. And I feel that the decisions that our board has made in the last couple of years, well, this is the sixth year of the tax cap, and we have been under it or at it the last five years. And I feel that our board has been fiscally responsible. And we just recently had the New York State Controllers Audit, and we had a pretty clean, a very clean audit. I think we might have been one of the few districts that were not cited for the use of our reserves. In fact, they said our reserves were great, and we've been using them properly. We also have a bond rating of double A1, which is the highest bond rating that a school district can get. And it says that your fiscal situation is in good shape. And so I think this, it's always my goal to try to put the students first and not to cut our programs and to add, if we do add programs, to make sure that they, whether it's programs like calculus or something like that or whether it's extracurricular, social-emotional things, programs in the schools that help the kids in other areas, I think that's what our board, everyone on our board tries to put first, the students. And I think this budget definitely does that.
Thank you. Joy? I do support the school budget and plan to vote yes. And for those of you who have been to some of the budget hearings, I apologize, I'm going to repeat some information you've probably heard before, but I think it's important to underscore it that "A stable, adequately-funded public education depends on sustainable approach to school funding, which comes primarily from two sources: state aid and local property taxes." Schools depend on both to meet students' needs, and meeting these needs while being responsive to taxpayer concerns requires sufficient state aid. The implementation of the New York State Cap Law in 2011 resulted in some fundamental challenges with the school budgeting process, and these challenges have been exacerbated by state aid losses or freezes in recent years. The tax cap is touted as a 2% cap on annual tax growth, but that's not actually how it works. It's tied to the annual consumer price
It's tied to the Annual Consumer Price Index, CPI, and an elaborate calculation formula. Every school district's tax cap is unique, and they often don't know until January of a given year what the potential tax cap for their district will be. To override a tax cap requires a 60% supermajority of its voters, a particular onus that school district face, but that municipalities do not, because they could actually override it with a simple 60% vote of their board. Additionally, a Fosun Foundation Aid Formula and a GAAP abomination adjustment, which we focused on advocacy efforts last year and actually made a real difference with that, did not allow for state aid to offset particularly challenging tax cap years for school districts. These factors combined with rising benefit costs make budget planning incredibly challenging. Since the inception of the tax cap, Pittsburgh has done an excellent job of staying within the range and while preserving quality program for our children. Last year and this year were perfect examples, though, of how tough things can suddenly become with a wildly fluctuating tax cap and a completely unpredictable state aid process. School districts should be able to bring in new programming and deal with unexpected expenses without placing excessive tax burden on their communities. I think the last two years' process has been eye-opening for all of us, and I anticipate that the board will be focusing on how to educate our community on these challenges while working ahead of time to head off future tax cap overrides wherever possible while not relying excessively on surplus funds. Thank you. Ted?
I do absolutely support the budget. I'm proud of it. I think our staff did an amazing job bringing out access. It's very student-focused. I'm happy that we did not hit the reserves excessively. We did not cut programs, and I'm extremely happy that we are adding full-day K. All of those things together is something that I'm very proud of, and I do wholeheartedly support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee?
Right, Ted, it is hard, even you're the last one. You guys have pretty much said everything that I've been thinking. I do support the budget, and I will vote yes. I do understand why the spending has been such. But we've been very lucky as a district. None of our programs have been cut. Our education values still stand pretty high, and many of our important programs are still available to our students. It is unfortunate that it's been a perfect storm type of a year this year where we've had a lower state aid, the tax cap as well as the debt burden this district is facing. And going forward, I do think it is something that the board needs to do, is to continue to look at other ways to raise revenue to help build up their, I hate to say, not a savings account, but to build up the reserve fund. It is very important to make sure that we have that extra money in reserve funds.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, Jerome, you get this one first. What is one specific action you would recommend to the board to increase the role of parents in decision-making and promote parental involvement in schools?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. No problem. What is one specific action that you would recommend to the board to increase the role of parents in decision-making and promote parental involvement in schools?
That's a good question. And as a parent myself, one thing, again, it's kind of almost piggybacked on what I talked about earlier about communication. I feel there should be probably more action by the board sometimes to get involved in the community, aside from our weekly or bi-week, bi-monthly meetings, to engage the community. And as far as engaging the parents, there are different outlets, such as social media and different, because every parent here, particularly in Pittsburgh, most parents are working parents who are extremely busy. So, we need to find ways to get in contact with them beyond the regular snail mail approach. So, get the board being involved in the community, maybe sometime having certain events during the year where we can, you can engage with communities, maybe picnics or something along that line, a community engagement type event, and also getting more involved in all type of media outlets, including social media, obviously still the original, you know, classic snail mail approach, to get in contact with the parents so they can, you can get more feedback. And I think Ted mentioned that before, that it's critical that not only that, you know, while I am advocating for the board to be more transparent and be more forthright and be more active, but also we need to find ways to make it easier for the community to give us feedback. And maybe bring ideas, maybe, you know, I just mentioned about picnics or some type of public engagement event where the board can engage with community outside of the classic boardroom setting. But that requires a dialogue, again, via snail mails, which we have to exhaust all options to really develop a stronger connection with our community and our parents this year.
Thank you. Kim?
Can you just repeat the question?
Sure. What is one specific action you would recommend to the board to increase the role of parents in decision-making and promote parental involvement in schools?
It's interesting. In this district, the PTA, most of the time is the vehicle that we use to put parents on committees, and that's pretty much how we've always done it. However, one thing that I've been thinking of over the past year, and part of it is because of some of the things that we've been talking about, the advocacy for funds and the situation with the tax cap and state aid and all those things that have kind of made the perfect storm this year. Years ago, we had a committee that was a budget review committee, and it was made up of parents and community members, people with kids in school, people with no kids, people whose kids had gone through the school. And they really met several times a year and just kept a finger on the budget. And it was, the board talked to them, our administrators talked to them, they could ask questions. And maybe 10 years ago, we ended up, our superintendent ended up combining that because it was some of the same people on the district planning team and the budget review committee. And some part of me says that's great because our district planning team sets the strategic issues for the committee, for our district, and they come to the board, and they have a really good grasp on what's important in the district. So, when we're looking for people to look at the budget and put down ideas of what, where we would look to cut or where we would look to add, I do think the district planning team is a good committee to do that. However, I feel there's enough things right now that are sort of bubbling to the surface that the possibility of having a budget review committee might be a good idea, and that would involve other people from the community that maybe, you know, don't have children, aren't as involved through the PTA. But I actually do think that the way the PTA has parents in schools, and I think the way the board has our workshops, we have worked at many other work sessions besides just for the budget. We have work sessions, for example, when we were looking at adding turf fields, we had work sessions. We had work sessions when we're looking at full-day kindergarten. And any sort of big issue that we've looked at, we do have work sessions before board meetings, sometimes several of them. And that is an opportunity for, and we've had big crowds at work sessions, for people to come, be involved, ask questions. So, that's another way. And lots of times, we've, there's been committees formed because of people coming and saying, you know, we'd like to look into that a little bit more, turf fields, whatever the issue's been. So, those are my ideas.
Thank you. Jory?
So, as Kim mentioned, and as you all know, I do have a strong PTA background, and I think that a lot of what we do is very valuable. And one of the pieces of the PTA part is that it's truly representing a stakeholder group. So, if you ever talk to a PTA leader, they're gonna tell you when they sit on a committee, like when I sit on a committee, I'm not representing Jory Sincada, I'm representing the parents of Pittsburgh. And one of the things that PTA provides is an opportunity for you to gain a perspective of all nine buildings and the different cultures. With that said, I chair committees where we've had new parents come on board who've not been involved in our process at all, and their input is invaluable because they see things from an incredibly different light. They come at you because you kind of get into a group thing, when you all group think, when you've all been in the same kind of conversations. And so, my one suggestion that I would have for us to make a shift is it really has to be a two-way street. I see that there are lots of things in this district that I think parents could be really helpful on, advocacy efforts being one of the main things for that. And I think, for example, when I came on as the PTA president, I joined the advocacy team, and we really wanted to do a push, and we came out to our community and our parents particularly, and asked them to write letters to legislators. And over 400 of our parents participated because we asked them to do so, and we educated them on why it was important. So, I think we need to do more of that on a consistent basis. And then the flip side and the two-way street of that is that we need to find out and do a better job giving some consistent opportunities for our parents to tell us what are the issues that concern you and how can we engage you in those ways. So, I think instead of always trying to come up with our own frequently asked questions, documents, without asking for what those things really are, or trying to pre-guess what we think the issues our parents might be having, we need to ask them what their issues are and then respond to them.
Thank you. Ted?
I agree with Kim on the budget review committee. I think that that's something that could be very helpful on an ongoing basis. And I also think invite a board member to dinner night would be a very good idea.
I'd go for that.
Thank you.
All right, and Renee?
I agree with Jory. As a new parent, a few years ago, when my daughter started first grade, I was looking for a place to start because I didn't know too much about the district at that point in time, where to begin, who to contact, and PTA was a great resource. And I think it would be wonderful to merge, to a certain degree, Board of Ed with PTA to work together to help parents find different pieces of information that they might need, whether it's kindergarten information, college preparation, that would be a wonderful component. And I think by the PTA, helping parents getting involved within their school communities, it automatically leads to the role of parent decision-making. Parents are able to listen and hear what the PTA has to offer, you serve as a liaison as well, and they give great advice. So, in my opinion, the working sessions as well, I think if those were promoted a little more, that was one thing that I didn't see much of, and maybe I missed something, but I would love to have seen more work sessions be promoted so that way, parents do have that ability to come and sit here and talk and share their concerns. So, those would be the one main action I would go for.
Okay, thank you. Gary?
Thank you. Well, in terms of parents' roles in decision-making, I think the first thing is we have to make sure that they have a voice. And, you know, what does that mean? Well, it means establishing better listening posts, I mean, a little bit to Jory's point about, you know, you can't guess what people are thinking, you have to learn what they are thinking. So, there are a number of techniques the district currently uses, you know, such as public hearings or whatever, but those in market research parlance would just be forms of focus groups where they're not necessarily representative of what people think, they're representative of what the people who show up think and what the people who show up and talk loudest want you to hear. So, I think that the district needs to engage in more scientific surveys, such as businesses would engage in when they're making important business decisions that are going to cost money and affect their futures. And I think that that's a good way to get feedback from a broader spectrum of parents and other residents, frankly, than are probably being engaged today. And I think by using that additional touch point, you're going to start stimulating interest in what's going on as well, and you're gonna see more people coming to meetings. Now, the next thing that you've got to do is to more actively promote meetings. It's not the easiest thing to find out when they are, where they are. Some of them come up pretty quickly. I'm not sure that they need to come up with such short notice because it probably guarantees short attendance. But there does need to be a bigger push on driving attendance to meetings. And then when people get to the meetings, the meetings have to be more fulfilling. I gotta tell you, it was very painful for me to sit through the budget process this year. We had terrible overhead visuals that were hard to read. We had board members who talked amongst themselves and not into the microphone so that you couldn't hear. We had handouts that were pretty small and hard to read, and no follow-up afterwards on the meeting in terms of minutes, so that, you know, you could talk to six different people after the meeting, and you get six different points of view of what happened because it's all whispered down the lane. So, I think that the meetings have to be more fulfilling, there has to be more opportunity for public input, not waiting till the end of the meeting and putting your question on a three-by-five card to maybe have it answered, but having your question addressed at the time in the meeting when the issue that your question pertains to is on the table. And then lastly, communication. We've had a lot of conversation about that, but communication about what goes on in the board meetings has to be timely, has to get out to all residents, not just parents. Because as I shared earlier, it takes two taxpaying households to support every student. So, everybody in this community has a stake in it, and I think if you reached out to some of our older residents, you might find they'd be very interested in getting involved in the schools and perhaps filling roles that parents who are busy working can't.
Thank you. The question is, and Kim, you get it? What does diversity mean to you? And what kind of diversity efforts and initiatives would you support as a board member?
Diversity, I think, to me, diversity means everyone has differences, everyone has differences of opinions, difference in many, many ways. And I feel that we all need to learn and work on being respectful, being kind, being helpful, getting along, being able to, you know, ask tough questions. And I feel like our board gets asked tough questions all the time, and we could, you know, really be defensive. And I try to listen and to really listen to what people have to say, what their opinions are, and take that into consideration when I respond. I try to be polite, be respectful. And I feel that we do try to teach our kids in the schools. I think every month, as you know, we have, one of our schools comes to present at the board. And every single school, I think, whether it's high school or elementary school, always has a little bit of part of their presentation that's about social, emotional, and things they do in school for those things like respect and that. And I feel the school does a lot of things for diversity. They have a lot of programs. Ones that I can think of, just off my head, we have a unified basketball program, which pairs kids from gen ed with kids with special ed, and we have it at the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. They play basketball games, and if you've ever been to one, it's phenomenal. I just went to the elementary Olympic one and talked about diversity and respect, and that's a huge thing. We have Rock to Change, we have Best Buddies, we have the LINK program, there's different, all kinds of different clubs that value and teach each other diversity, the kids talk to each other about hard issues, I think, and try to remain calm and polite and kind to each other and respectful. So, I do think that we do a lot about diversity. There's certainly lots more that could be done, but every one of our schools have a focus on it. And we also look at diversity in our, like our literature. We recently just reviewed all the literature, and I think there was a grade level that we felt we needed more diversity with our, you know, not in the curriculum so much, but maybe the textbooks. And so, I think we constantly are monitoring that, and it's a work in progress.
Thank you. Jory?
So, I think what's probably gonna be evident when you hear these six answers is that diversity probably internally means a little bit different to every person in the room. I mean, by a dictionary definition, it's our differences. And I don't think that you can have a conversation about diversity without talking about inclusion and putting in practices in place that don't just recognize our diversity, which is important, but also find ways to make it relevant. And I think our community has started a really good dialogue on that. I don't know how many of you were able to attend the Derek Gay Speaker Committee that the PTA hosted, and that Ann Binstock thankfully, like, was a dogged person on making sure that he came. I was privileged enough to work with her to help bring Derek here, and I learned so much from that presentation about how to make conversations about cultural diversity, all different kinds of diversity, relevant to everybody in our room. And I think that that's part of the work we need to do as a district, is really think about the language we want to use when we talk about diversity and come up with a common theme that works for our district that then we can begin educating our community around, and the logic as to why it's important to our district to have it. Because if you just throw words like diversity out there and then just, you know, half-heartedly throw darts at a board of creating programs for it, it's not gonna be very effective. You really have to create goals and purposes, engage your community on why you think that's important, bring into the table people who have invested interest in that topic, and make sure that their voices are heard, and create, implement effectively that uses community engagement, hiring practices, effective outreach, that will move the needle and not just pay it lip service. That will require an effort to share why this work is important for all of us and not just underrepresented groups in Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Ted?
When I hear the word diversity, the first thing that comes to my mind, like Jory, is inclusiveness. I think it's very important. And I think about all different groups, and I think it's district-wide, I think we do a very good job at being inclusive, and it's across many different groups. And I think about special needs, I think about Quest, I think about things like the unified basketball programs that we run, I think about the many different programs that we run. And... And I think that knowing, as Kim mentioned, that we've been evaluating our curriculum to make sure that, um, that, looking for opportunities and looking for gaps, to make sure that, um, that there are, uh, there are no gaps or if there are gaps, that those are addressed. Diversity is something that we should not let be divisive either. And, and that's something that we have to be careful about. So, um, it's, it's a very relevant issue at this time and something that we have to be very attentive to.
Renee?
One of the things that I talk to my students the first few days of school is about being different and how they can look around the room and they see kids with glasses and different religions, different clothing, different hairstyles. Um, they come from different socioeconomics. We have different multiple learners. We even have students from different LGBTQ community. And I think it's important to keep all of those kids in mind. And when I talk to my students about all of our differences, I tell them it's the one thing that makes us great. It's the one thing that unifies us, our differences. And we need to keep that in mind as, as parents and as teachers and as community members. I too think of inclusion. Um, being a classroom teacher of special needs students along with gen ed students, I think it's important to show how kids, no matter their grade point average, that their ability and their, their effort to work hard is there. And it's important to make them feel welcome and comfortable. I think our school district here in Pittsburgh does a phenomenal job with diversity. I feel that my children have come home, whether they've talked about different groups of people, um, different programs that are offered within the district. I feel like our schools are very engaged. And I too agree that our New York State curriculum does offer a lot of different curriculum and, and different readings, literature. I think we can do better. Um, and I, I would like to see that improve.
Thank you. Carrie?
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, what, what does diversity mean to me? I think first, it means diversity of thought and respect for different kinds of thought and, and different kinds of abilities and the different backgrounds that lead to those different thought processes. There's a myriad of, of, of ways that thoughts can be influenced. But diversity of thought is important. It needs to be encouraged and preserved. Now, what would, what would I do? Well, I would find, find and build on the ways that are already in use to encourage respect for each other and also frankly for our country because I think our country has been getting a bad rap. I'm kind of a student of history and I'm afraid that we're losing a lot of our historical perspective. I would also, although, you know, there is the, the, the yard sign that you see all around town that says, differences make us stronger. I think differences can divide us if we focus on them too much. And we need to start looking again at what, what things are similar among us. And because that's really how we're going to move forward, is if we have common goals. Now, one, one way that we can, uh, we can help people understand and become respectful for others with differences and then find the similarities is to have them walk a mile in somebody else's shoes. So I haven't studied this, uh, what's going on within the district yet. But, you know, tutoring and mentoring are great ways for children from, and students from one socioeconomic background or who have one set of abilities to, uh, to learn about and help somebody with, from another background or who has a different set of abilities. And to discover more about themselves and more about other people in the process. So I think finding more ways for our students to walk a mile in somebody else's shoes could go a long way towards, uh, building a stronger community, encouraging respect and understanding.
Thank you. Jerome?
Well, um, I guess somewhat fitting down the last one on this question. Um, so to me, what does diversity mean? To understand diversity is to understand what it is to be a human being. I mean, from a basic biological level, we're all, we're all the same for the most part. But in the end, we are still, each of us are uniquely different. You know, regardless of skin color, culture, whatever, we're all uniquely different. Now, um, it's, uh, as a person who's considered to be a minority and as a, as a person, person when you potentially be a board member, I would want to, uh, help support policies that's going to create and foster environment that where differences is not, is, is, is embraced. And it's also, it can be a point of, of education because really this is a school system. This is an opportunity to learn about something you're not familiar with. And that's what really should be the drive home point for our parents, for our teachers, for anybody. You know, we, you know, the first instinct for any time when you deal with something that's different is fear. It's a natural human instinct. But we need to promote with our kids that, you know, we need to really take an analytical approach. Particularly talking about human beings. Again, I just have to reemphasize that we are all, we're basically the same. But there's very, of course, there's very minor differences between, which is what we think, eyelashes, whatever. Makes us all uniquely different. We all have our own unique fingerprints, so to speak. But we need to create an environment and, 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 and that we embrace these differences as a point of learning. And as, you know, we are here in Pittsburgh and we are to a certain extent going to have a, a, a different type of bubble that we live in. And every community has their own distinct bubble. And we have to understand that this is not the entire world. I mean, and particularly when you look at the, the environment that our country is in right now and that the, the climate, you know, we're, we're starting to become more of an insular thinking, well, at least that's what seems to be being promoted, this kind of insular type of thinking where, you know, this world is huge, it's large. And it's only going to get more intertwined with the way technology is evolving, the way that we are, there's more mixing and intermingling of people from all different backgrounds. We can't promote or even ignore the fact that this, that diversity is important to understand that it's not going anywhere. And we have to have a, a way to foster learning and encouraging that this is, is, that everywhere it's safe to be diverse and different. And we, we, so as a board member, I would want to look and investigate, make sure that that is, you know, our policies and everything we have in, in, in place. We'll support an environment where diversity is, is encouraged, is investigated. And it's, it's an opportunity for all of us to grow as a, as a person.
Thank you. So we're getting in on time and I do want Jory to have the opportunity to ask a question, answer a question first. So I'm going to ask one more question and then we'll get on to your two-minute closing remarks. And this question is, explain your thoughts on the Common Core state standards? And are they needed and beneficial in the Pitts- Pittsburgh Central School District?
I was waiting for that question. Um, I have a little bit of a prepared answer only because I had an opportunity last year, um, as the advocacy chair for Gen Z Valley PTA to, um, actually do a parent presentation to the governor's forum as they were preparing to create their committees for revising the curricular standings. And I, I won't read that whole thing, but I'll give you a little piece of kind of what I, what I talked about that. First of all, as I mentioned earlier, the state update to the ELA and math standards was released yesterday. And you all have an opportunity to, um, to give your feedback on that. But, um, curriculum is individual to each school and parents place the greatest trust in their own district's teachers and administrators in making decisions on how their children are to be educated and assessed. Educators and curriculum specialists who work day-to-day with the students should be conducting the standards and testing review. More local control and transparency are required for this process to be deemed critical by the parents of a New York State. Teachers must believe in the instructional practice that translates curriculum into student learning. This requires training, trial, reflection, and correction to make instructional practice effective. This process must be supported with sufficient resources and time. The current standards in grades K through twelve, K through two specifically are a major concern. Educators and parents feel they are developmentally inappropriate. Standardized tests do have value, but only when tests themselves and how they are scored are viewed as fair with timely and understandable results that are perceived to improve learning merely than, than merely grade students and their teachers. Children work best when presented with interesting and relevant experiences in a format that is at, not beyond their instructional or frustration level. Testing must be balanced against the standards, curriculum, and performance expectation, yet must also provide timely feedback that serves to improve instruction. Introducing a teacher-principal evaluation based on student achievement tests before instructional practice is stabilized has promoted undue stress, student anxiety, and teaching to the trust rather than improving thinking and learning. Teachers and principals do need performance assessments, but those assessments should have the goal of improving instruction and providing valuable feedback to help them become more effective educators. It has not been proven that the current rating system will have any impact on improving instructional practice. When state testing credibility is suspect, parents will not encourage students to do their best and will reject the assessment purpose or the test themselves as not relevant to their child's learning. I think, um, the Common Core standards and revisions of standards are not a new, are not new. You know, standards have been evaluated and updated over time always. Um, I do think that, um, the way that these standards were created and implemented was faulty. Um, I do think the state is trying to take a step back and try to correct them. Um, we'll see what those evaluations are. I am willing to take a look and, and see what they've done with them. And how our teachers and administrators feel about that is very important to me because they're the experts in that field.
Thank you. Ted?
Can you repeat, can you repeat the question, please?
Explain your thoughts on the Common Core state standards. Are they needed and beneficial in Pittsburgh?
Okay. Um, I do believe that, uh, the system of standards are important. Um, and I do believe, um, that the, uh, the new, um, standards that are coming down, um, there's been a new process. And I'm anxious to hear how that's received. Um, there, the new process, as I've read up on it, involved, um, teachers and, um, others from around the state. And it was a very inclusive process. And, um, the hope is that that will yield a far better result than we'd seen prior. And, uh, as far as the need for the standards, um, it's, it's important to have a measure. And I think the decoupling of the scoring from evaluations takes some of the burden off of the, um, off of the, uh, curriculum. Um, I think Pittsburgh's done an excellent job in developing, developing its own curriculum based on the standards. And, uh, that has been reflective in the performance. So that's pretty much where I stand.
Thank you. Renee?
I wish I had more than three minutes to talk about this. As an educator for eighteen years, I've seen our education system change. When I first started, I was given a curriculum guide by New York State that showed exactly what I, what I needed to teach. And I teach seventh grade social studies. So it's all early American history through the Civil War. And since the, since Common Core has been rolled out, I find that I am teaching less content and I am teaching more skills-based activities. And, and not that skills-based activities don't have a place. They do have a place, but it shouldn't be the main thing that our kids are doing. I miss doing the projects that I used to do years ago that allowed kids to express what they knew other than sitting down and taking a multiple choice or a DBQ essay. Um, and every now and then when I can, I will squeak it back in. But it, it's so difficult because you're right, we are teaching to a test. It doesn't matter what grade level you are at. There are expectations and we need to meet them. Um, and our students, I feel like are paying a price for that. When I look recently, you know, at, at the New York State exams, our kids are taking them as we speak. They are stressed out. They don't necessarily or accurately, I'm going to actually read what I have. As an educator, I have seen ingrained these biased and developmentally inappropriate state mandated assessments that are purchased from companies that don't actually show the student growth that we as teachers could see if we created our own exams. I do believe we need to go back to locally created benchmarks that would be age-appropriate based on the New York State curriculum, based on what teachers know that's best for their kids, what they have been teaching, and offer some timely and valuable insights to student progress for both parents and for teachers. I don't feel like getting a report four or five months after my child has taken an exam has any value. I don't know what they've done well and I don't know what they need to work on. Um, and I, that is something that honestly doesn't mean much to me as an educator. I don't look at those scores. I throw them out. It is, I do, I do. And, and I will be honest, it is, it's important. I do think districts need to have standards. But I do think that needs to go back into the hands of the school districts, the teachers, and the administrators because they know what fits their kids best.
Thank you. Gary?
All right. Well, with regard to, uh, was Common Core needed, I think that... There we go. Thanks. With regard to was Common Core needed, I think in New York State, not. New York State always has had good standards. And I'm not sure that, uh, Common Core is an improvement. In fact, I think it probably dumbs down some standards that we would have had. And it removes, uh, a lot of opportunity for diversity, the diversity that can make some districts really great, um, some teachers really great and can allow some students to really excel. So I don't think Common Core is, is a great thing. I'm, I'm grateful that in, in Pittsburgh, we have, uh, great teachers and we're able to get the outcomes that, that Common Core is looking for using the, the more creative and thoughtful methods that the teachers are able to apply. So we're very fortunate in that regard and I'd just like to see more about it. Um, I, I feel it's important to have some level of standard at the state as well as, uh, then district standards. Testing is inconvenient and it's stressful, but it's, it's the only measure that you really have when you're comparing students across classrooms, across schools, and across districts. You know, many of our students are mobile. Uh, they go, go from one place to the next. And it's very, and I can share with you as our, our kids have been integrated into four or five different school districts. Each one is different. And if there isn't some good trail that, uh, that is left in terms of testing and other kinds of assessments, it's very hard to know where to, where to place them because each district has its own opinion of how good it is. So I do think that, uh, that, that there is a, a place for standards. I think it's at the state and I think it's at the district level. And there is a place for testing, but, but I'm not in favor of teaching to test. I think that's, uh, that's not good for students nor is it good for teachers.
Thank you. Jerome?
So as, as almost a lifelong student myself, uh, I can appreciate how, you know, standardized tests do have a role, particularly in certain, um, levels that you have to, you have to get by in your academic career. You do need standardized tests to a certain extent. However, I don't feel that this Common Core and the whole principle we have on Common Core is somewhat, uh, a little bit slanted because it was not created by teachers. And, and that itself was a faulty design. Um, it does give some inflexibility to what the teachers can do. I mean, uh, as a teacher, you need to teach to your student, not to exam. Um, so it's not reflective of the attitude of the teacher or the, the student. And, um, so it, it, this one-size-fits-all approach to the Common Core, I think, and just in general, is a faulty, faulty, there's faulty logic behind it. And then there really hasn't been any data to show that this, it was ever really a, a well-thought-out procedure. So I don't support the Common Core. I do, I agree with most of my colleagues here as far as that, you know, this does need to be, as far as, uh, school standards, they need to be, uh, done at a state level with, uh, with, uh, with the administration and teachers are involved.
Thank you. Kim?
I do, I do think there should be standards. I think there's been so many problems with the Common Core for lots, all the reasons everybody else has said. Um, I do think when we, when, the way Pittsburgh dealt with it, our teachers wrote a lot of their own units. And I think that made it, did make somewhat of a difference. However, um, I do feel one, one size doesn't fit all. And I feel as if we should have more local control of what our students need. I think our, our community, our teachers, our administrators, our parents understand what Pittsburgh's about, what our kids need. And I, I do feel that there has to be some type of testing. I feel the testing now is, um, stressful, um, not timely, feedback's not timely. I do believe also that the new commissioner is listening. And I believe she's done a lot of things to try to turn it around. It's, it's a very slow process. And I know the, the feedback forms just came out yesterday for, for people to have a time to input. But I do feel that there should be, be more local control over content and more age-appropriate. And I totally do not feel that teacher evaluations should be tied to how kids do on test scores. I think we had, um, all the years I've been on the board, that's something we worked very hard with, with teachers. In contract negotiations was the evaluation system for teachers. And I felt we had a very, very good evaluation system for our teachers in place. And I feel that it's that same thing, one size doesn't fit all. And I feel the community in Pittsburgh and our students, we know, we, the community, the parents, the teachers, our administrators know our kids and our teachers the best. And I do feel there should... know our kids and our teachers the best and I do feel there should be, should be more local control.
Thank you. On to closing remarks and Ted, you get to go first.
I would like to thank all of you that came out tonight to learn more about the candidates. It's a testimony to the commitment our community has for education. I would also like to thank the PTSA who's done so much for our district, helping to make it as great as it is and for sponsoring tonight to meet the candidates tonight. We are faced with continuing financial challenges and ongoing desires to be the best of the best. Addressing issues like inclusiveness and social emotional wellness cannot be overlooked. This will require steadfast leadership focused on student-centered and sustainable goals. I look forward to continued participation as a member of the Board of Education, helping steward toward these goals. I encourage all those eligible to come out and support the budget on May 16th, to support me, Ted, and most importantly, the kids of the Pittsburgh Central School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee?
Again, thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy schedules to come here and meet with all of us and hear what we have to say and to learn more about us. And again, thank you to the PTSA as well as to our board members for hosting. One last thought is that I would like you all to know that I will be an ardent advocate for our students. I believe that education is the great equalizer and that all students deserve a well-rounded education that fits their academic needs as well as prepares them to be responsible citizens. It is my personal belief and practice as an educator that in order to meet and maintain any and all goals for the greater good, three components are needed. They are trust, it is compromise, and transparency. Without trust, nothing can be accomplished within a community. Without compromise, moving forward is not possible when there are many valid perspectives that need to be considered. And without transparency, the community will not understand why and how decisions are made. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Gary?
Hi, thanks for allowing me to share my views with you. Through you, I'm an outsider candidate with more than 35 years of diverse and deep business, community service, and board leadership experience. Experience that includes customer research, working with unions, using large vehicle fleets to service customers like students, and marketing communications. As Pittsburgh residents and preschool owners, my wife and I have a lot riding on the success and the successful management of the district. I'd feel the same way if I had children attending schools in the district because I'd want the best possible education for them. In short, I'm up to and committed to the challenge of addressing how the board manages the processes it employs or oversees, the budgets it develops, the facilities it uses, the public meetings it runs, and the way it communicates with residents like you and me. And I guarantee, if you give me your vote, I'll be inquisitive, candid, provide clear direction, and stand up or stand alone if it's the right thing to do. And why is that? Because I'm more interested in helping you than being re-elected again and again and again. In fact, I think term limits might even be a good idea for the board. Although I'll vote for this year's train wreck of a budget, I don't like it and I like the bad alternatives the board has left us with even less. The district's a big train and it needs time to safely transfer to new rails and I'd like to help it do that. Also don't want to see another budget like this one ever, but I'm concerned that we will routinely unless we change the status quo and begin to populate the board with some people whose ideas aren't confined by the paradigms and relationships that make change difficult. We also need members with the skill sets to do the big job that needs to be done so that Pittsburgh schools remain the best in the area and among the best in the state and the nation and so that future budgets are responsible, sustainably funded and affordable for all taxpayers. Please take advantage of this rare opportunity to refresh the board on May 16th by voting for me so that we can begin to reset how our board listens to us, conducts itself, makes decisions, and sets the direction for our future. Thanks again for the opportunity to be heard tonight, I really do appreciate it and visit my website, www.gcg-pcsd-boe.info for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerome?
Well, thanks, thank you everybody for, again, for coming out here and during this, listening to a lot of different perspectives. I want to let you know that I'm a firm believer in like a three-part approach to our children's success and this three-part approach includes actively engaged parents, enthusiastic, great teachers who are committed to preparing our children for the future, and finally, a school board in a school district that will provide the resources and facilities for a high educational experience. So as a father and physician and a resident of Pittsburgh, I want what is best for our children, all of our children. And if I am elected, I will strive to make sure that occurs. I look forward to your support on May 16th.
Thank you. Kim?
Well, I think Pittsburgh's, I believe in their quality education and that one of the reasons we attract families to our community is because of our high education and we have a history of success. I believe that during my tenure, I've helped the district navigate through many extremely challenging situations. I believe my extensive knowledge of the district is critical over the next few years. I think I can add value in many areas, especially areas such as mentoring new board members, addressing complex budget issues, and a lot of progress with advocating for funds and Common Core and testing, all those things need advocating and I think we have a great community to do that together. My strong financial background and my commitment to invest my time and my energy in the school system makes me an excellent candidate for reelection to the Pittsburgh Board. My passion for serving the children and the families of this community hasn't wavered since the first day I got on the board until now and I still feel so strongly about the collaboration that we have in this district. I do believe that there's always room for improvement in communication and more parents on committees and all of those things, but I believe that, what I believe in is a good, solid, invigorating, respectful education for all of our children. We have a lot of diversity in this community with kids that need special needs and kids that are academically talented and kids that come from different socioeconomics and I believe all kids should have the same opportunity for studying, for being on extracurricular activities and I'd like to think that I could bring that to the board and remain a very important part of our Board of Education. Thank you and thanks, Sherry, for moderating and thanks, Maura, for running this evening.
Okay, thank you. Jory?
Well, I too want to thank the PTSA, not only for organizing this evening, but also for all that they do for the parents, teachers, and students in our school district. I enjoy the opportunities to share with you my thoughts on what I'll bring to our Board of Education. People often use the word insider like it's somehow a bad thing, but if my sustained dedication to advocating around issues facing our parents, teachers, administrators, and most importantly, our children makes me an insider, then I wear that label proudly. I personally think my involvement at many levels of our school district within the Pittsburgh community and regionally has helped me prepare to be an effective representative for you all. I hope to focus on improved two-way communication, promoting dialogue and effective practices towards diversity and inclusion, and bringing our community together to advocate with our legislators for more sustainable funding models and continue revision of our academic standards. Pittsburgh has always been ahead of the curve on providing our children with an enriching educational experience. It's my hope that we continue to work together to address our financial and academic challenges in a way that allows all of us to continue to be proud of this exceptional school district. Thank you.
Thank you. And that ends my responsibility for this evening. I will turn it back over to the PTSA.
Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.[1791.15][1791.15][applause]